Good. Okay, cool. Right, so folks we're we're trying something new today, we're trying to dual stream this stuff into um uh Twitter and uh Youtube, so this whole thing might crash in uh absolutely uh two second. So welcome everyone, um remember like uh if you're new to this stuff, what we're gonna do today, we're gonna uh do a bunch of deep learning stuff on uh the screen and uh it's just uh uh an excuse for all of you to ask question about deep learning, about uh machine learning, um hiring, whatever, right? I'm here for that, uh background computational science uh researcher, for a while I did a lot of machine learning and now I like uh I run a small machine learning team in my company. Hi Arsha, how are you doing? Okay, cool, so not this is this is nice, this is working, um so today what we're gonna do and this might backfire because I uh actually never implemented that algorithm ever, uh is backpropagation through time, right? So that thing, okay, um we did the RNN yes two days ago, uh it went well, not too bad, it's like two line code um but I don't know how to unroll it, so we're gonna have to do a lot of digging here, uh be with me, that might be a bit brutal, uh we'll see uh we'll see how it goes. Um also uh what I'm using right now, this stuff, DeepML, uh pretty cool, there's just a website where like uh you have a heckload of um a machine learning uh question, kind of a lead code thing, right? Uh but for um uh for uh for deep learning topic and then you have a bunch of stuff in there that uh uh are neat, you can uh run the code and then there's a bunch of test cases uh there's a bunch of like uh premium feature where you can uh oh not this one, uh you can see the whole um uh uh question cut in like multiple uh element. I never use it because almost like cheating to me, um yeah, but that's what we're gonna do today. So don't hesitate if you have any question and I'll try to uh monitor this these two chat uh I have no clue uh guys how to like blend the chat so I'll do my best, right? Hi Joffy, how are you doing? Welcome to welcome to the fun. Um okay, cool, so first off, what the fuck are we doing? So implemented simple RNN backpropagation through time uh test to implement a simple recurrent neural network and backpropagation to learn from sequential data, the RNN will process input sequence, update hidden state and perform backpropagation to adjust weight. The forward pass here will be pretty simple, I think, it's the backward um yeah, it's a backward that will be a bit of a mess. What are we using here? It's just like, okay, so we're gonna do it, run and apply and so does that mean that I don't think there's a computational graph on there? I don't I don't think we need that. This is RNN, it's like it's like one thing, um this let me pop out in our own architecture real quick. Okay, this is what we have to work with, so basically we have this and then we're gonna have to unfold it and then we have to do the the thing in reverse, right? So backprop through time and I have to do this like that. Yeah, this is where I took the picture. Yeah, just like this, right? Um so the number of time we're doing this here is purely related to the number of input we have. Ah, right, right, right. So this is why this thing is um uh a bit simpler and we don't need a re uh computational graph because you already kinda know and then uh we're gonna have to, is it tanh? I think it's tanh. Yeah, we have tanh in there, okay, so we're gonna have to figure out tanh, we're gonna have to figure the derivative of everything and um but what is going on here? Okay, there's weights here and there's a bunch of weights here, right? Uh I think so, this is like the output at that time. Yeah, and then uh so I calculate the derivative where, this, there, 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 uh I'm not sure. But like this is the f the usual flow, forward is gonna be easy, forward is gonna be like the two line of code that we already saw and then backward, this is where it's gonna be a bit of a uh bit of a journey, I think uh we're gonna have to to do through that, um yeah. Uh Yasin your identification number please so I can know which Yasin information. I don't know still, if you have any any um any um uh clues about that, uh do let me know, uh send me a DM on LinkedIn. Okay, cool, uh so we have a class, simple RNN, um initial RNN with random weights, so this is already done for us over here. Last time I didn't do that, I just straight up put it to zero, I think, uh yeah. And then in uh I mean zero biases, so this is good, we have a biases for the hidden state and biases for the y, okay. And then process a sequence of input and return the hidden state and output. So what's the output here? Like a tuple? Uh what is the output? Where and you put the output where? We put the output eh it just stays, right? It just stays in the what the yeah, yeah I think it just stays, okay. We're gonna print the output here, the output will be that, um and then the backward we have x, y and the learning rate, and this is where we're gonna do the backpropagation through time to adjust weight be be based on the loss and this task the RNN will be trained on a sequence prediction, okay? Where the network will learn to predict the next item in a sequence. Okay, you should use uh mean squared error as a loss and make sure to aggregate the loss at each time step, so aggregating loss is important here, okay. I'm gonna start to cut and paste a bunch of stuff because I'm gonna get lost pretty fast. I think this one is is a hard one, um not sure, okay. So this one seems important, like this one, uh here make sure to aggregate the loss at each time step, time step, so my time step is that, right? That's my time step. Because it just fall back into the same thing, right? This is it just is, so we just need to fall back here multiple time, um so like the data is my time step. Right? Data do 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 it, okay. Getting there, um okay, cool. Okay, so then uh uh let's figure it out a bit more, uh the the ops here. Uh recurrent RNN are designed to handle sequential data by maintaining hidden state that capture information from previous input. They are particularly useful for task grid plot and a RNN process input one time while retaining maintaining a hidden state that get elated each time, so this I know, this we did it last time, right? And this the output computation is just wait, uh did we do that last time? No, last time I think we just um no, last time we didn't do this at all. We just straight up um used um um we straight, no, I I think we just calculated the hidden state, let me log in, uh give me a second, here. Okay. We're back. Uh okay, which was which one was the last time that we did the here. What do we do? This one worked. We didn't uh just we just calculated the hidden state. And okay, this is what they wanted to s to to shut shoot up, perfect, so that's good, we're gonna use that again right there. Uh where is it? It's a hard uh no, no it's not that. It's this one. Okay, perfect, so forward pass, we just have the x but we have our states, right? So for and our x is w uh s x is what? Anyway, right? It's an input sequence, so this is the whole thing, uh okay, this is good and it this is our x at each um sad time, but like it's at each i. So each i goes in there um and then we need to update the hidden state, so so that hidden state. Let's gonna make this bigger. Right. Do we have an hidden state? Hidden size. No, we don't. Uh but I think don't think we need to keep that information uh for the hidden state. No, we just need to keep accumulating, okay, at the end we do that, okay, perfect, I get it. So okay, step one. Step one. Okay, uh so this is step one, we just do the same thing as last time where um we actually go ahead and calculate the hidden states. Right, uh and then after that, once we're done uh calculate the output using the last uh uh y node. I think this is it because it's a sequence modeling um thing, right? I think that's the the whole thing. You can't hear me? The volume too low? Shit, sorry guys, um how can I, is this better? Can you can you guys hear me better? Folks on uh on Twitter? Let me know, let me know if that's good, okay, yes, thank you, Hafmed, thank you very much. Okay, cool, so um since it's a sequence modeling, um it's what it's what? I think it's a next token type of prediction type of thing, is what I said? Uh sequence prediction, where the network will learn to predict the next item in a sequence. Uh cool, thank you guys, uh you were just cranking up the volume just to hear hear like the the little sound coming out of my mouth. Uh okay, um so yeah, this is why we have this y at the end, it's because this we just need to like generate the last, the next token, so basically what we have is we get a sequence like this, right? And then we need to output uh just this little bit here, just one little thing here. Um and then this is where it will go through the many steps of the um uh the RNN, right? And this is each of the x that we have over here right? And this will be our final y. I think I think that's like fairly correct uh to assume that, okay. So that's good, uh this I already know, so let's do this one first, so step one, calculate, well, the hidden state, yeah, the hidden state. And for this, we are doing the same thing, so we have uh tanh here and then we have our WxH wait, how big is this? Because I have this and then I have that. Well, again, this one is here, okay, cool, so I have self dot Wx H right? And I have self dot W HH uh like this? And uh how did I how did I uh set up my hidden state? What what's the what the heck? Okay, it's just one element? Okay, I think I'm not sure here, I have to, well, step zero somehow initialize uh the hidden state. Right? So that's the very first thing we need to do here, um and then it's just gonna be, I don't have a self that hidden state, it's just gonna be hidden state here, right? And then I'll just need to initialize it and I have only x's here, um what is the expected output is all of that? Oh, right, because we're what? What's the what's the expected output here? Ah, wait, the the output should show the RNN prediction for each step of the input sequence. What? What are we saying? Okay, wait 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 a second, so okay, yeah, let's back off a bit, um hey man, hey I meant uh let's back off a bit, we'll just uh okay, so we have w yeah. Let's forget the code for a while, let's go back here, I think it's gonna take us a while to untangle all of this mess, um so we have that, right? And this is for the forward pass, uh no, this is the architecture, so this is good, this is the input at time step t, right? So uh but this is like this whole thing, so this is gonna be uh our x our x at zero and then our x at one then we have our x at two tup 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 and then we have our x at t, right? That's gonna and then h is a hidden state at time step t. Okay, so that is our h here, right? At each of these time step. And then what do we have? We have WxH which is the weight matrix for input to hidden state. So here? Yeah, and WHH which is the weight matrix for hidden state to hidden state. For here. That thing. And then we have which WHI is the weight matrix for hidden state to output. Oh, I think I get it. Yeah, I think I get it, okay. Okay, so I think what what I'm getting confused is like what are we outputting here? That we always have to output something, so this is why our Wy is there. Um so effectively I have to do the two things at the same time in the uh in this thing, like uh not just calculate the hidden state here, right? But like also calculate the other thing, so I have to do the two of them together. So these two uh need to be like no, wait, what? Yeah, yeah, that's good, that's uh that's correct, right? So the flow is this, is that we initialize, right? So like this is like initialization and then once we're done initializing, we're gonna go in there and then we're gonna do a looping on the um x, right? So here we're gonna iterate on x. And once we do that here, where we iterate on x, we're gonna do two things, we're gonna do um a block that will be the hidden state. Hidden state. And then we're gonna do another block here which is going to be the output. Y. At the same time, right? So these two, we're gonna oops, we do we're gonna do that here and then we're gonna iterate on x like that here multiple time, right? And then what do we output through when we're done? I d I think we we output all each of the y's. The output should show the RNN prediction for each of the time input sequence, here this is it. I don't think we need to output um uh the hidden state in this specific case, in the other one I think we did, we didn't need to do that, but in this one I think think this is gonna go there, so where here we're gonna go like this the old block and then we're gonna do output the final y's. You think that's it? Yeah, I'm not sure. Uh we have a bunch of, like no, a good good blog post about BPT, yeah, just link it and then like we're we're gonna need all the help we can get here. This guy is Yasin, uh we have a question from Thiago, this guy is YasinXX, um I'm Yasin, I'm on X. Yeah, I will not say more. I'm just a first year undergrad guy, but definitely one day I'll be able to understand your video fully, maybe in third year. Understand them now, right now, I have a question for experimenting algorithm, you can understand them absolutely right now, right? Like, I'm gonna make something very clear, right? There is nothing in here that is inherently difficult, absolutely nothing in here that is difficult. There you don't have to wait, there there's not anything um related to time uh in in this stuff, you could you could literally literally learn about it right now. You not necessarily have to spend like four years of your life learning linear algebra, it does help, right, to understand the stuff. Um but you can figure it out as as you go, right? You just have to have some some basic amount of like math literacy and then you should be good. Uh and then after that, it's just like you wanna learn this stuff, just kinda do it, right? Like just just do these things and uh you should be good to go, it's not uh it's not it's it's a bit hard in machine learning and deep learning because it seems there's no defined uh uh how to say it, like uh deep learning path or 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 what whatnot. Uh but if you have some like basic of programming, you could just burn through one courses and you should be good, like take this one, right? I'm gonna tell you what to do. Um take this. Let's see, I yeah, Practical Deep Learning for the fastest course I've seen to get the a beginner uh started, right? This this one. Over here, right? You take this, okay? And you do it like this year, like right now, not in not in three years, um and you should be good. Like you you're gonna you're gonna be you're gonna be like ramped up uh pretty fast. Like after that, everything else is a bunch of details, right? Like the the paper we saw yesterday, absolutely nice if you like already have a lot of knowledge but if you don't, like you just have to understand some like basic concept that like there is uh this quadratic attention that is super useful and then this this there's this linear attention that we're trying to to uh to use in order to kinda uh have more long context. And right now it's not working well, that's all there is, right? I don't have to like look at all of the intricate detail about, I don't know, like uh weak admissibility matrix, um like all this stuff, like Fenwick trees kinda doesn't really matter too much, right? So you have to be able to kinda discern the details from the the core, um but you just are able to do that when you actually go through it, so experimenting algorithm, you go, just do it, if you have any question, let me know, right? Uh yeah, new stuff keep coming every day, so the best time never comes, yeah, there's no better time, right? Like um if you think about it, uh hey what, like uh when I started, like l it was not clear that language will be the thing, right? Like where everybody was on vision and they were like, wow, we can make this this that. Like language was, I remember like um I I was talking for my uh one of the research we're doing with some guy in NLP lab at McGill and then the guy was also working at Google um uh as an internship and I was just trying to get some help to like uh run my 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 things on uh one of the uh high performance cluster, right? And the guy was in NLP. And the first thing I said like, oh, you're doing chatbot. First thing I said is like, well, actually it's a bit more complicated than that and um like we're doing all of this stuff. But effectively, yes, he was kinda doing uh we're like we're kinda doing chatbot and and whatnot, but like it has something fundamental that was attached to it. Like at that time I didn't know, like I was sure like it was vision and I was not even focused on that, I was focused on like my own research and thing. So like just just learn and I I like to be honest, even if you take an example last um four month or so or so, who would have predicted that reinforcement learning would have made a comeback in largely a good model like post-training? Who, right? Um yes, there was reinforcement learning for human feedback, but like the GRP thing like kinda uh changed a bit the game and now we're like we we're experimenting on it, it seems to be hitting like a some sort of ceiling and stuff like that but like still, like there's always new stuff and there's stuff from the past that will come back, so just if you're interested about this, right? Don't ever think that there is a specific path that you need to follow, if you're interesting about this stuff, you just learn the stuff. If your teacher says like, whoa, like slow down, what if your mom says that you don't listen to anybody, you just you just go and like use your interest to uh fuel you forward, you're gonna learn much faster and these kinda wants like this or or deep need to learn something don't happen often in life, so you grab that and you run with it. Thank you so much for your advice, yeah, well, this is what I do, I'm doing giving advice here. If the link is not visible, search uh QuarkML BPT, it'll pop up, okay, cool, yeah, cool, do it. BPTD. That's this one, right? We're talking about and then this one? With derivation by Seadark, June two, two thousand twenty five. Yes? Uh let me know, um thank you so much for your live stream, I'm learning deep learning from GP, who's GP? But I'm like, no worries, I'm here for that. Okay, perfect, let's keep on going. So I think this is it, like this is my fourth uh thingy, I'm actually gonna code it now and uh pray that we're doing right. Uh my hidden state here will need to be as big but it will be it will need to be as big as uh mo I can just do that, yeah, I'll I'll just do that. Or do I need to keep, I don't need to keep track of each of them. Uh wait a second, uh wait a second, uh what the heck is happening? So I have one, two, three, four, what's the a sequence of inputs and return the hidden state. We're gonna run the code and look at the test to see like if uh where like uh this stuff is gonna be complicated or if we can simplify it. Oh, yeah, GP means Japan, sorry, man. Cool, yeah, keep it up, man, how you gonna work at Sakana? It's an awesome apps awesome lab, I love it. So okay, wait, so this is the input, cool, and this is the oh oh it's two dimensional. No. Fuck. Uh shit. What if it's two dimensional? Why do we? Okay, no, this one is two dimensional. Yeah, this is but I have one output. Oh wait, wait, wait. You see that? Ah I get it. Yeah, the input size and output size is telling me what to do. I was just I didn't even look at that, but like these are super important. Um oh, by the way, um Mo, the guy that is making this, if you're watching this, like one thing that could be nice is like have these big um I think sometimes you do them, like the these big description of what is each of the input and what each of the output is. Um that'll be awesome because like now like I didn't even register. I had to mess around with hip input size and size and output size. Um because that will fit here and then uh yeah, but I I don't think I need to worry about that too much, right? Uh no. The about okay it's because here this one. N P zeros. I can just do um uh my hidden size, right? I can just just go like this and have that. Man, that should be good. Right? I I can just have that. S that 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 like this should be alright. And then I don't need to worry about the X too much because technically speaking uh the output size and hidden size will kinda match. So when I will do this, I'll be I'll be um uh I'll be good to go. Yeah. See you Annette. We're gonna be in the same spot when you're gonna get back. Um it'll be the same. Okay, so that's good, I think. I think this is fine, but like uh watch out. Uh might be messed up. Okay, and then I iterate over to do I even need to iterate? I need to iterate, yes, because this is sequential. I have my hidden states. But this is what I'm not getting. Wh why do we ha even have a hidden state? Uh size. Like you have let's say you have five here. One, two, three, four. Okay, no, it doesn't have anything to do with um uh uh what the heck? Oh wait. My do I need to overwrite that? Oh no, okay, I think this is good. This is a matrix. Okay, cool. Forget everything I was saying. I think we're good here. I just need to uh it's gonna be a five a five on one, I think. Um yeah, okay. Let's 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 roll with this. I'll take a note that uh this may be uh messed up. And then we can just move on. And then we have the hidden state here here. We're gonna update it every time. We're gonna have our Bs in there, which is gonna be self uh B H. B H. Here. Yeah, I think that's it. I think I think this is good. Well, it's it's looking super good. Um where's where can I store my output? And how big? Okay, wait. Yeah, okay. Yes, 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 yes. This output it's gonna be that. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Uh wait. Wait. Output size, no, one. But I need to have the length because I need to shoot it one at a time. Uh I think so. Uh wait a second. Okay, because like this one need to be uh so it's gonna be what? It's gonna be like length of input uh by output uh size mentioned. So it's gonna be like either one D or two D array. So uh like the output size here is fine. Like what do we need to print here? Let's see here. This is the output. It's gonna be uh one by two. No, should not be that. It's gonna be a one by four. Why do we have Is it collapsing everything to one? Do we always have output size of one? No, this one has output size of two. But then if you look here, it's like the input sequence length here. So so what? This is just an array. Wait, okay, I have to watch out here. Um watch out. Uh X is just an array. My need to jam that back into number. Okay, so this is one thing, but then after that, okay, I'll need to do um output size and then this is uh input uh length. I think this is it, right? And then I can then just do that. I'm gonna take it. Uh how did I do it here? Yeah, just like this, right? I'm gonna take that, put it here. And then give it my X and my X will be there. And then here I'm gonna do um X dot shape. And then it's gonna be um I don't care about full shape though. I care just about like the length of the array. Okay, wait. Input len equal len X. Somewhere around the line. I think that I think I think that's where that's where we're gonna converge. Um are your advice on doing what? We 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 have a few questions here from chat. Are your advice on doing math as if it's something like a sport is great everyday practicing question for Math Academy? It's fucking grind at uh for you Emily here. Yeah, like uh it's just it it's usually that. It like it it is it has nothing. It it's very physical, right? Like mathematic is like it's has something about like the spatial domain. Um so you actually actively have to do something. You can't learn how to swim when you never seen a pool and you never got in, right? I you don't have to learn about hydrodynamic to be good swimmer. You can be a dumb rock, right? Dumb as a rock and be hella good swimmer because you went there and then you actually moved your body and then you like optimize yourself, right? Uh sitting on my S N N and project building the retina, L G N and V S cortex and having the same issue with spike coding. Oh, brain in a shell. What are you working on? Okay, so we have another question. Last few weeks I asked some question to you and I'm trying to be understand deep learning first and solve the current research problem. Thank you so much for sharing. Um I did you send me a message on Discord um uh BoBoMintDev? You guys have funny names. Um okay, so uh Yasin instead Yasin instead of keeping yourself busy as well, could you get back to fixing the bug on this platform? Ever since you left, it's worse than before. The streamer, display on mobile is disaster. Like this is out of my end, guys. Like uh if you if you want to fix X, right, you're gonna have to uh like ping Elon at this point. Like you can't help. Like uh I've I've done everything I could, but I can't I can't do more. Yeah, the question uh the question is uh is a bit rough. Uh we're but we're gonna get there. We're gonna get there with uh with this one. Like right now I'm just trying to figure out like my uh input output size, but I think like that's that should be should be not too bad. It might be completely messed up, but it should be not too bad, I think. And then the output here. Oh wait, is this messed up? Because I'll there's two way of of going around. I can have this here, right? I can have this here. Okay, I can either do this or do that, right? I can do that also. So uh here uh let me just move stuff around. Again. By the way, we're using till draw over there if you're asking. Can iterate on H and just get it here. Is this smart? Seems like absolutely wasteful. Seems like a bad idea. No, it seems like super dumb to do it this way. Yeah, we're like if I have the H here, why would I save it and then go back to it? Like this should be constant time, not I could just do it there, right there. Yeah, I could just do it right there. And what's the out? No, the output is just like this. It's just like a regular array. You know what? We're gonna do it ugly, right? We're gonna do it like super ugly. And what we're gonna do is this. We're gonna do output. And we're not gonna figure out the um uh the any size, right? And then I'm gonna do output that depends. And I'm just gonna shove it shove the shove the out the current output in there. So this will say solve like few of my problem. So what do I have here? I have W H Y H T. So self dot W H Y like that. Add hidden state. Is that is that it? Is that is this correct? Plus self dot B uh what? Is this it? And then we just shove that there. Do you guys think? Does it make sense? Not even sure. Yeah, I'm not sure. Um I'm really not sure here. Um but then I could just return that, but I can just return the output at the end. Like we have our hidden state calculation and we just initialize it um here to be the hidden size because it's just one thing that we're gonna keep on like like uh overwriting on. We're not saving anything on it, right? We're just gonna keep on going. And then by keeping on going there we're gonna use this here to calculate our output directly. Uh you know what? Uh let's let's call it like this. It's gonna be hidden state at time T. This is this is more like it. Uh and then yeah, you're right. I think here it's gonna be T. The one thing that is interesting, um we're gonna go in uh in a tangent here, but in a R N N and like generally speaking in like uh transformer architecture or or like language modeling and what whatnot. Um i i it's usually when you have a time step, it's not really a time step, it's like a data step. There's no concept of real time in these model, right? Um which is super fascinating because here I'm gonna write T, but it's not T, it's I. So like each of the token is I. The time aspect of it comes from the the sequence of the data, right? But one data point could be at the one specific time. I don't know if you understand that part. Um which is very interesting. Like right now the m the model has have no real concept of time. Like uh they are just like always like this. Same thing with this one. Yes, it's recursive, but just it's just to calculate the output. Like this is one output that we gave, right? There's there's no concept of like there's this, that is coming, nothing is coming. Then there's just another thing that is coming. Um the closest thing that I've seen so far is like the neural neural dynamic type of a thing, spiking neurons, uh liquid state, uh uh actual neural network and uh the continuous thought machine, right? Like with the ticks. Like that's it uh in term of of time because this is actual time. Like it literally is actual time and then the data is fed once and then the time is passing and then as the time is passing, there's some computation that are happening. Um just a fun aside. Fun aside on time. Okay, cool. This is it. And uh oh shit, I think I have a do I have a call right now? Okay, um uh we'll take a short break and we're gonna come back in about five minutes. I just have to take a call. Uh wait second here. Give me a second. Here wait second here. Gimme a second. Okay, sorry for that. We're back. Had to take a small call. Uh but we're good to go. So um cool. Where the heck were we? The outputs. We're doing the outputs. I think this is good. I think this is fine. Um if we take a look at this back, the forward I think that's it. The forward pass is like you initialize to I should have read it. I should have read there. Ah snood. Ah ah jeez. I need to Ah yeah, this is not good. Like I could have I could have r read the whole thing and that would be so much simpler. I need to store these. It's just not just not just that. Um Yeah. Uh no, this like yeah, I still need to uh do stuff here. Uh still need to uh initialize stuff here. Store h and t and y and t for using backpropagation. Of course, like you we need these. Otherwise like uh no way we're gonna back propagate uh uh properly. Like it doesn't make any sense. Um so we're gonna store them over here. And actually I I didn't wanna do it. I wanted to be done. But I'll need to uh hidden uh state. I'm gonna have to do something here and I'm gonna have self dot wise. I'm gonna need to do something here. And what's the what's the size of these? Hmm. Because the hidden size here, if we see it blah 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 blah. Hidden size is three, right? Meaning what? What does it mean if there's an hidden size of three? Oh. What does it mean? Here is ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. But it inputs have two. Upsides two. So one, two, one, two, three, four. What does it mean that there's an hidden size of ten? I think uh this is not the right um R N N multiple hidden size. I think this is the issue. Think we found the issue because we're just we're just fairly fairly slow. Okay, so this is not what we're trying to do. It's this one. That one is what we're trying to do. Right? This is this is this thing. Like the depth here is given by um this hidden size. Right? That thing. And uh this is the input size. Right? We we set it to zero, right? So here we initialize it to zero. So this whole thing is gonna be initialized to nothing. Zero. And then it goes through these to these different states. And this is this grid that I need to 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 store. So like that grid will have uh size of input size to hidden size. Okay. I think we got it. That's it. So the h uh will be um uh hidden size and then input size. Input uh size. Hey Anant, guess what? We're still in the forward pass. We haven't pudged. But I like I made a big true here. I think um I think we're good. Um I'm gonna take that. Gonna put it here. I'm gonna uh store it as hidden input size here. Right? 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 This is good. This is good. And then the wise is gonna be the y is gonna be what? They have to be flat. It has to be one array. No, it doesn't have to be flat. No, no, it doesn't have to be. Uh yes, because each of them over here, right? Each of these guys Okay, let's see. What? Here. Like each of them will s like store not this but an array. Right? Like this. Okay, I'm I'm a very visual um not e not even visual. I like physical. Like I need to play around with the with the thing and not to understand. So this part is the output size, I think. Zoom in here. This is gonna be output size. So all size. W an array of all size, right? That's what what's gonna be uh happening. So we're gonna have that. Oops. This, this here here. And and then if we look here, let's say this one, right? There's like one, two, one, two, one, two, one, two. And then the input was four. So it's output size by uh input size or versus versa. Never know. So this whole thing is of size um input size. Roughly speaking, I think this is what we're we're working on, right? So we have that output size inside, input side outside. And in this card in this part we have hidden size inputs um yeah, I think this is it. So this will be yeah, input size. So this will be input size, output size. The other one will be uh an in size, input size. Something like this. Some something like um uh the the ordering I'm not sure. So here the ordering I have no clue. So ordering not sure. Uh try it out. Right? Okay, so this is good. And I'm gonna do an np zeros. And then we're gonna do did we said what? Input s output size input size. Or or one or the other, right? Uh wait, one or the other. So I'm just gonna leave a note. So that's that. So it means that we don't need to do any of this here. We don't actually need to um to do any of that. Well, it should be good. Here. There's no initialization whatsoever. Not even in the output. But it also means that like meh. I can't uh I can't mess around here. I'll have to update it at a specific um specific point. Yeah, this here like this doesn't work now. Like this part this doesn't work. Uh need to iterate on index. Because I need to have the previous state calculated before moving to the next one. Uh I think I'll have to leave 'cause I have some urgent work. We'll catch the stuff from the recording. Guys, don't stay here if you have job to do, right? Have a have a good one Anant. Okay, so um okay. But I think the formula roughly speaking is is good. Uh I don't think it's um it's um it's bad. Um but I need to index here. I'll need to index properly in there. Okay, so trading apply with uh index. It might not be it might not be that great. Uh yeah, I think it's gonna be disgusting what I'm gonna do, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Right? I'm gonna do this. Like that here. And then we're gonna do index value, right? Then we're gonna do here. We're gonna do I'll 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 pull the stuff up that I need here. Um y yes. Yeah, I'll need to do that. Input size. I'll need to do that, yeah. Okay, yeah. I think this is it. So this is jammed into um jammed into a numpy array, right? Put it there. And then we need to iterate on the x. And once we iterate on the x, now what we could do is we just need to see which index we are. Do our stuff. And same thing here. We see in which index we are because it the these two all both have the input size uh somewhere in there, right? And then by doing that stuff we can actually uh figure out which weight we need to take and then which x the value here is this. I'll call it x t, right? This one is is fine. I'll call it x t. So this stays and then the hidden state will be hidden state self dot hidden state like the current one gonna be that. Uh but then I'll need to okay, wait a second. I'll need to take this to update the next one. And next one, next one, next one. Oof. I don't like that. What is going on on this one? 初is hidden state h zero to zero. And then we're taking t minus one. And for each time step, we have this zero. First it's gonna be here and then it's gonna be uh we start at t. What? Like the issue I'm having right now is like how how am I gonna do the t minus one here? Like I'm not sure. I'm not sure how I'm gonna do that. Um yeah, this is not too this is not too clear. I'm gonna do I mean I have to because here I have hidden size, input size. So this is just like the length of it. But I'm gonna need I'm gonna need it throughout. I'm gonna need that stuff here, here, here and here. So this is size n or t. And then because I'm i inserting all of these guys to zero, all of them. But the first round I'll need oh, I think I get it. No, I think I'm I'm thinking fine here, right? I think like what I gonna need to do yes, is like uh yeah. We're gonna do this. Okay, see see that. prev hidden state. Right? And then here we're gonna do prev hidden state equal hidden state at now index. And right there, we're gonna do prev prev hidden state equal. And this is where we're gonna set up to zero, right? Gonna set that one to something like this, right? Like that. Here. And that will be our t zero. So so this is like h zero, right? And this is like our h at uh t minus one. Right? So the last hidden state will not will be um will it be used? Yeah, it will be used here. It will always be used. Yeah, it will always be used. So I'll what you know what? I'm gonna take that. Put it in a variable. Have it here in hidden state t. Right there. Like that. And uh I'll just update it afterward. Doesn't matter, right? Then I will do um hidden state at index equal uh hidden state t. And that thing I'm gonna it's the one thing that I'm gonna put here. Yeah, you know what? I'll do the same thing for the output. The output doesn't need to be kinda indexed like this. I can just do that here. And then the output will be be this. Right? Self blah. And this I'll need to to do i. And uh wait h. Oh whoa 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 whoa. Wait a second. Wait a second. How? Oh no, this is fine. The output size in it. No, this is not fine. This is not fine. No. This is how? Wait, 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 wait. We're still we're still um if you if you just tuned in, right? We're trying to do R N N backprop. It's a hard one. And um right now at this current moment, we're deep, deep, deep into figuring out the size of the arrays. So that's what uh that's what we're doing right now. Um And I And I don't know what like the size of the ad the wise is output size, input size. This is what I said. So there's like a few of them that we're gonna p we're gonna jam there. Um oh but it's this is fine, I guess. Like uh it doesn't matter. I can just store there. Store it here in my output. We call this output. I can just store it here. And in this case uh the w h is gonna be the output size, hidden size. Wait a second. Do we have only one set of weight? Oh dear god. I think that's it. I think that's the issue I have is that it's the same set of weights. Th it's not like there's multiple weight for each time step. There's one set of weights. And it like it all depends on the hidden size. So like the weight are not dependent on the input. They're depending on the hidden on the representation that we have. So I literally don't have to do this. I don't have to index on them, right? I don't I don't have to do any of that. Should work properly. Yeah, I think that's fine. I think this is good. And we're only storing them because we're gonna do the backpropagation. If we didn't, like it didn't it wouldn't matter. Um okay, I think I started to get it. I think uh I think I I I start to kinda get it. self dot here self dot outputs index output t. Uh you know what? I'll take this. Put it at the end 'cause this is gonna be preparing for the next iteration. Prep for next t. And this is like storing information for uh backprop. And this is uh calculating oh this is actually the forward. Forward forward on time step uh t. I think that's good. I think I think it's not too bad, right? I think it's uh it's not too bad. Okay, cool. So let's power through. Uh this is h at t minus one. And now we can test it out. I think it will do nothing. I think there there's no um there's not gonna be a test. Uh hidden size is not defined. You mean self hidden size? Where where did I write that? Where in here I wrote that? No, I r I meant that. Uh this is fine. Yeah, I meant I meant this. 'Kay. matmul inputs do not have enough dimension as zero blah 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 record one. Okay. I think this is because I messed up that part. I think the input size need to be first in both. Right? I think that's the the general gist of it. Right now I'm just gonna run the code multiple times just to check if we can rem run through it. Um and we still can't um what's up? What's up? What's up? What's up? I think it's i is it is it this? Need to be one first. I don't know which part is messed up. No, I don't I don't know which part. Okay, I'll have to wait x t here is what is like one thing. And then we have hidden size, input size. Oh wait, no, we're n we're not gonna run this all at once. Alright, is this one that we need to step on? Because it's the weight for oh jeez. Is this the issue? That we have the weights for the these over there? Right? That depends on the input, but these don't. But this one the hidden size by hidden size and it's getting multiplied here by the previous hidden size. Should give us one number plus the self bias, which is gonna be one number. Again, these two will add and this one uh I think this is the part that is messed up. I think this is uh this is it. So okay, let's we know the drill. We're gonna make it this super ugly. Uh we're just gonna try that out. Just gonna comment everything out. Uh return self dot I I don't even think that we need to to do anything here. We don't need to return anything. 'Kay. Think this part is the one that is messed up, yes. And if I don't print that, but I just print the value it should be good, right? Okay, yes. So uh it's not that. It's this and then I need to do index. Right? To a float and another float. Okay, what do we have? Self w x h index. Well uh first off, I want to know what's up here. What what do we have here? Yeah, what do we have here? x t Twelve. Okay, what? We have uh no, not the hard one. This one, just four, right? What the s what the fuck? Oh, and that there's something I'm not seeing here. What they're doing is they're calling RNN forward on the input sequence. Uh and then they do RNN backward. But this is just four. Why is it doing this? Oh no, jeez. It's because of this. This one is huge, right? If I just do x t I'm gonna see the same four. No, it just keep on going multiple time. What's go what's up? What's up with that? Why are we doing this multiple time? Jeez, is this is this this thing? Okay, wait. Print x here. Print going in. And print that. Now we're going in multiple ti we're calling forward multiple time. Thought we were just testing it once. What's up? Is this happening on each of them? Yeah. What's going on? But like when we're going going in, we just do it once, right? Oh, I think this is how we test for 'Kay, I get it. I think this is how he's testing for if it's um uh uh look correct because he's gonna do the forward and then do the backward on the same input multiple time to overfit the network so that like he can actually have an expected output. I think this is what's going on. So when I'm gonna print this, it will always be absolutely garbage. Shit. Oh no! I can't debug. Okay, okay, okay. Okay, let's not well uh we're gonna put my breaking statement here and there? Oh man, this is complete garbage to 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 test the stuff. Um oh just uh gimme two sec. 'Kay. So these will be my debugging statement. Like this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna go in, go out and we're just gonna like copy paste that part and I'm gonna look at it on a Collab notebook or something like that. That that's what we're gonna do, right? Um we're just gonna do that here. 'Kay, right there. 'Kay, so no. This is all we have, right? And this is my x t. So this is the data, this is the x t. Okay, cool. And now what I wanna know is what's uh going on when I do this? Well actually no. What's going on when I do that? That my x t, my w x h. It's gonna be what? It's gonna be that stuff right there. Right? So that's what we have. Oops. Uh wait, is this this is one and this is another one and this is another one and this is another one. They look like the same thing. All all the weights. Oh, is is this because of the random initialization? I think it is. Because I'm going in, going out. Oh no, yeah, okay, cool. Okay, this is fine because it's the same thing because it's literally the same thing that I'm printing multiple time. I'm not iterating on that. So I can do index, but maybe? What happen if I do index? I'm gonna get that. I'm gonna get numbers. Right? Is it normal and that I'm getting numbers because this is my stuff. This is actually actually w h and I'm gonna get this, 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 that. This is the size of the input. This is my input. This is like w w what is this? What is this part? W x h is the weight matrix for input to hidden state. Uh wait, where am I? W x h at x t. How do we do it here? Yeah, I think this is good. Uh the only issue I have now then is that uh it's just two float that I have. There's this issue. Like this one I have the issue of two floats. But maybe not the other ones, right? Uh numby float, numby float. No, all of them are messed up like that. All of them are messed up like that. And even this one. What happen if I do this? Still get a bunch of numbers out. Oh no, 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 no. This was not good. Uh it's absolutely not good. I'm getting like each of them one by one. As if like this one was one big uh no, this is absolutely not okay. Uh I think this is what happened, right? I ended up just iterating on the whole sequence. 'Kay, I think I get it. So I don't need to iterate on this new x array. Okay, I d I think this is why. Yeah, so um what I'm gonna do. I don't need to do that. I'm just gonna uh uh wait. Have a hidden uh index value iteration. I'll just animate them. 'Kay. We are making progress. It doesn't look like this, but we are making progress. So uh yeah, good. Good, 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 good. You see that? This is good. This is nice. And if I do this right? I do it like that does it will still still work? Yeah, same uh same API here. Y yes. Index out of bound what the wait, what? Um one, two, three. Yeah, this one is not good. Like this one is. N x three is out of bound for axis zero with size three. So what do we have here then? It may look not look like it, but like most of this, I don't know, like in for it's my for my part, most of the coding actually is not that hard. It's just like jamming the the matrices and all together properly, right? That's kinda that's kinda the hardest part. Um which is the one thing that I'm struggling right now. I'm struggling in bad, very bad. So wait, one, two okay, 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 okay. I thi I think I think we can make it work. So here if I do this and I do everything here and index, I think this is it. This will be it. No. 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 The other way around. Gotta have to take a refresher of tom buyers or some shit like that. Where are we going in? We're going in here. One iteration, two iteration, three iteration, four. And two? Two is out of bound. One is good. I'm gonna have to take that whole thing and look at it. 'Kay, what do we have? So this is my input, right? And this is I don't need that. This is my weights and then this is when I'm going in and this is when I'm gonna iterate. This, 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 this. Good. That's nice. This works. I'm able to iterate on one, two, three, four, five. No, it's not working. It's absolutely not working. It's a five. Because the hidden state is five. So if it's a five, I'm multiplying it with what? How does that make sense? X at t. Okay, wait, wait. X at t, add h. Wait. What? Kinda stunned here. I'm really stunned. And then if you can come back here, I can maybe like actually read the stuff properly. Uh dip, 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 dip. Now if you let me get something like this, output layer, input layer. This is this and then we have multiple one. This is a derivation, the forward pass. Um and then we have h t x at t. We had a a ten on there, right? This is where we're at. And you have the backward pass, right? Well this is nice. And then this is a bunch of derivation, blah, 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 blah. Okay. Uh this is good. This is okay. All all good. So the issue I'm having at the moment um is figuring out how I'm stitching that together to actually do that part. Now we just swap them there. But it's not working. The this thing is not working here. Um this th this is just like not working right now because I'm iterating like this. But if sh we should not do that. That there's no point in iterating like that. So should I just not iterate here? Because that would be messed up. I do think that they would be messed up. It does. There's no way this works. Well actually yes, it seems to work. Yeah, it seems to work just fine. I'm just not And it's gonna we're gonna get what? One, two, three, four, five. So the size of the hidden state. Okay. Good. This works. We're gonna we're gonna we're gonna use that. So this part is fine. So that that is good. This is actually this is actually good. The issue maybe is there, right? So we're gonna take that bad boy over there. I'm gonna put it here in our little debugging module and uh I'm gonna print this. Not elf, self. Yeah, this is the issue. This is where it is messed up. Why, right? Uh okay. Yeah, I'll just pass here. Oh, actually, yeah. I'll pass. I want this. And I want the previous previous hidden state. And I don't care about that anymore. Wait, wait, wait. Okay, well bu I'll I'll actually uh W h h and then this is uh here's it. This one I know um the size of it. I just I think I just need to swap these two. It's brutal, but we're gonna get through. I g I guarantee you we're gonna get through this stuff and we're gonna see the other side for sure. So let's actually see that. Oh this is this, this is that. So what what would we we have? One, two, three, four. Uh this is five. This is a five, right? And this is at um what is the oh, here, sorry. It's hidden size by hidden size. So I just need to swap them. Like uh because I think this is the one that is messing messing it up. Swap that. Should be good. Right? Uh should be fine. Right? 'Kay. Yes. 'Kay, it's going through it. Perfect. This is flowing and I just add the self, uh the b. So we could just do that. Let's try this. Right? Ah yes. Nothing crashed in there. Nothing crashed. So I think we have the right form, right? This form is not too bad. So we have the right form here and if I do this, I should have the right form there with the W h. If I knew how to write, yes, I would have that. No. Because I can't write. Yes, cool. Yes, yes. Whew. That was uh that was rough fun. So this is my forward and then I can jump this, this, here, here, here. And like uh let's just stepwise. Double check, sanity check. What the fuck? What's the shape of that? This is a ten by ten? There's something I think I'm not getting in. Okay, blah, 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 blah. It It's a ten by ten. Why is it a ten by ten? Thought it was a ten by one. But it's all zero the rest. So we just multiply everything together multiple time and then that hidden state is then the whole thing. And then we just store it. And same thing for output. What's the what's the size of this? I think I'm starting to get it. I think I am. Truly. This is a two by ten. Which makes a lot of sense. It's a two by ten. The other one's a ten by ten. So I'll have to swip swap these out. But like this is what I have to have to um Yeah, this is messed. I have to do that, think. And what's the hidden state? t here. This one's a ten by ten. What's the other ones? Three by three, five by five. What? No, but I no, 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 no. No way. Because I I need to store all of them. I have a five by five right now. Like that thing is not right. This is not right. What did we do here? What the heck did we do? Hidden state at t plus that this is the previous hidden state. What's the st Oh wait, we're not even updating it. This should break then. Like if this is the, that should break. Not even not even breaking. It's a three by tr we for the hidden state. But we have a hidden size of three, but we have an input size of one, two, three, four. Should be a three by four if it's gen like how can it generate a m like a square matrix here? I'll have to do it my hand, this whole thing? I don't wanna do it just by hand. There's maybe something I'm not seeing. There's most likely something I'm not seeing. With the W x h. I I feel like this is the issue. We have hidden size and input size. So uh we'll have to take that slice there. Otherwise it's not working. I don't I don't get it. Then this is kind of fine. Yeah, this is fine. Because we're multiplying by uh this. Right? That uh little thingy here. So go like it will collapse it. to the infinite capital D outputs. I think it's here. This is where we are messing it up. But it does make sense in some ways that this gets uh like this. And if we look here my hidden state is like three. Which is not which is okay. So three by one, this get collapsed. Great. It should. I we're going to go back debugging mode. So we're we're kinda um narrowing down what is going on at the moment. Uh and what I need here is then uh that that chunk. What is the size of this that I get out? Uh uh add. What do we get? Uh no, yeah. No, it should be g no, okay, here. Done. We're deep here. We're very deep in the debugging right now. See what I'm looking at? Where's my add? My add is here. I have that, which collapsed it into one. Okay, so what the f what do I get out of here? What is it that I get out? I get this. It's a tree. Because I have three hidden state. That's nice. Right? So a tree. By one. And then what do I have here then? I think that if as soon as we figure this out, this is still a b a b it's so it's still a tree. So why why do we have this thing to be um to be so weird? The shape is not right. Hidden s state t. That I don't I think the calculation is fine. I think now it has some s to t something to do with like the shape of this. Uh hidden state t. This is what we have. I just keep on going. Wow, nice. No, here. Right? Um no, I just want that. 'Kay. Is is this the right snippet? No. Okay, f well first the hidden state is zero zero zero. Then the hidden state is that it's input size on the first time we oh 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 oh. Is this it? No, I don't think so. Oh no, yeah. So okay, let's print it from here to here. Okay, we'd actually yeah, we did we did the going in. Is is there a raise condition here for printing stuff? What? Oh no, it's this one. Okay, okay, okay. So like let's let's not look at the first one. It's the second one that matters. So as soon as we go in, we have that. Which is a three by three, by three by three, by three by three. Why is it doing this? Why do I have that? Uh it's just repeating this multiple time. It's the same stuff. How is it a ten h that is doing this? Is this it? No way. Is it creating me uh no, it's not creating any like it's keeping the shape properly properly here. So that's not that. So if I just take that bit uh okay, let's break it down to a step then. So then I'm gonna have this like that and I have this three times. Here. Here. Uh here and then like that's the last bit I have here. I would love to be stepping through this instead of like debugging like this like a caveman. 'Kay, wait. Where is my b h W h? Why is this? Okay, then no, this is good. And then b h. Okay. That's one iteration. Okay. So this is what we have. We have that, we have that and we have that. Do I have to tell it uh is it this? D do I have to tell it to do element-wise addition uh NumPy? Is this is this this? I I think it's this. So np dot add these two together. H I don't feel like that's this. And then another np dot add. This feels disgusting. No way. No way, no way, this is it. Well actually I'm gonna do it um well wait a second. I'm gonna do it in there. 'Kay, so I have this and then I just need to do plus Well this is in one array and then this is Uh yeah, I think this is this is why it's messed up. Because I have Do I have to cast this into an array? No, I don't think so. I don't I don't think that's right. No, because it is inside an array. Because if I print x T, I should see an array in there. We're going through it guys. We're going through it. Where in the heck is my x? It's just the one number, right? And then my W my self dot W X H should be a three uh wait it's this. I think that's the issue. Th I think this is that part that is a bit too messed up. Because I have five of them. It makes no sense. Yeah, it makes no sense to have all of that. And W H e especially in the other ones. Like the other one's gonna be even more messed up. Like here, look at this one. This one's supposed to be a ten by ten. No, not this one. It's gonna be too big. This one's gonna be a three by three. And if it's a three by three, we're gonna get two, two, two. But i there's three of them for each hidden size and this is the input size that is a two. And here the input size is one and I have a five, so I have an array of five. No, it's fine. No, this one is fine. I don't think it's this then. So we have a five by one. Okay, wait 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 wait. Did I did I mix that up again? So we have wait, we have um we have five of them. Because the hidden size is five. Makes sense. If size one. Also makes sense. And then like that part, he makes one, two, three, four, five. That makes sense. And then this part here right? He makes five of them. In that part here we have four, five. Wait, what? Five elements, yes. So if this is the case then gonna gonna do this. Yeah. Like that part. If I do this part here now right? I don't need all of that now. I should still see a five by is it concatenating it? Oh no. I think it does. I think it is concatenating this whole thing. Shit. Okay, we found it. We found the issue. It is just concatenating this thing and it should not be doing this. We should do np dot add, right? And then they should just be adding the two together element-wise without any issue. And then we should see a five by one if I am correct. Here gonna get what? No, we're not getting this. Do I have to let to tell it on which dimension to add? What is this? No. What the fuck is going on? Yo folks, do you have any any clues here? Right? Now will be the time. Now will be the time. I mean, there need and we have this. Whole thing. 'Kay, so what's up? We have that. Good. Then we have that. That's also good. Uh I have we have all that. Why? Because this one has doesn't have the same shape. It's one array. Oh no. I think this is the shape shape uh shape of this one. Um Why though? 'Kay, wait. I'm actually literally literally gonna do that. So we have gonna A, it's gonna be this. Right? And then we have uh B gonna be that. So this gonna be so A plus B, I get what? Yeah. But the all of these are just l regular arrays right now. They are not even NumPy or whatever. They're just a whole bunch of regular array uh that are just g getting printed there. So I get all of this. I just concatenate them together. Um but that's not what I want. Oh. P. So if I do np dot array here and I do there what should I get? I get that matrix. What? Why? One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four five. Wait, one, two, three, four, five. Uh What is it? Uh I literally don't get it. A dot shape is what? Nice. B dot shape is what? This one is missing a shape. Ah yeah yeah, I think this is it. R I think this is it. Because it's missing this. If it add this right? If it add this doesn't fucking matter. What? I just want to add them two together. What is it? I will do the same thing. What is it? Is it? Wait. Take one positional argu argument uh the five were given. Oh I mean, sorry. And that's the same thing as the other one. I don't know man. I re really don't know. Like if I if I think th if I if this happened, right? If we add that thing here right? Plug that I think then that would have made sense. I think I'm getting it, right? Duh. My x array is messed up. Because if I have it like this, it's fine. If I have it like that, not fine. So I'm gonna put that thing into a literal NumPy array. I think this will be doing the trick. And we're gonna be uh th because I'm re iterating over x here. Right? And if I'm iterating over x I solve nothing. Wait, is this it? No, I think I need to uh iterate on over the the whole thing. Uh wait 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 wait. Yeah, let's 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 look at this one, right? So yeah, okay. And let's put it here and do np array in there. Right? I don't think it's a B. Oops. Wha what's up? No, doesn't matter. I think it's a x. The x is messed up. Because I get like square matrix instead of like uh just literally a regular addition. Like a regular regular addition should be getting. And I got this big gigantic thing, which if you look at it, is just repeating the same thing over and over at the top. Um but you see here this one has like all of these. Uh think I'm gonna need to do that. If I do it here and then I'm gonna run it here normal like very normal I should put it into the right shape. 'Kay, wait. Uh I have still this. It just output me one array um elements. My only issue is this. The only thing well because I'm oh yeah, the only thing I'm having right now is um that little bit where my uh my x is messed up. Just my little x T here need to be just not messed up. And you see he it is in his little thing but then the size of this is not right. Like the shape of this is not proper shape. I'll take I'll need to reshape it. So five, it it's missing a dimension, right? So I'm just gonna have to do see if I do this dot uh reshape uh and then have uh yeah, oh jeez, it's getting ugly as heck. Well wait, let's let's see this five by one, right? This should be fine visually. Yeah, yeah yeah yeah. You see here? This right there? This is fine. But like I hardcoded it five by one, but it's gonna be like self dot hidden size. Right? I I'm pre pretty sure pretty sure that this has there's another way to do that without having this disgusting element like that. Um but I don't have time for that. No, no, it's not this one. It's here. That reshape and then self hidden size and width of one. Okay. And if we look here Yeah, what I'm what I'm putting here? Putting that? I don't wanna put in that. A five by one. We got it. Yes. And then we take that and we shove it there. Are you g you have to be kidding me? What is this? The hidden state is not the right size, what? Oh. Yes, it be this. 'Kay, that's good. Uh wait. Yeah, that's that should be good. Uh wait, could not broadcast input array from shape five to one. Oh man, I just want this to be stored. What? 'Kay now, I just need to store this properly in there. But why is it not uh do I have to force the reshape? I I literally don't know. Literally, literally don't know. Um store vector in matrix. Store vector in matrix. Uh NumPy. Okay via indexing. Is this even like proper to do that? I don't even think it's good. Hmm no I don't think it's a good idea generally. Um but you know what? It doesn't matter. I'm just gonna do that here and then uh hidden hidden uh state equal nothing. I'm gonna take that bad boy over here, right? Do hidden state dot append like this. And then once I'm gonna be done, I'm gonna print the hidden state. Uh that shape. Uh not sure it I'm not sure hundred percent it will work. Did you mean self hidden state? No. That's not what I meant. State with an S. Yeah. Uh this is an array. It will fuck it up but I can just cast it. Yeah perfect. If I print it I should see a five by uh four I think. Okay where is it? Going out right here. Boom 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 boom. An array here. One, two, three, four. Two array. Is that five? Two, three, four. Where is this? This is good. Oh I'm printing it in the no. Okay this is this is the array. Okay. Whole thing. So I have one array, two array, three, four. Good! And then uh literally can put that thing into um uh what if I do this? This is super wasteful by the way. Like uh don't ever do that. And I think I have one dimension too much. What do we have here? Okay we have one two, three four. Look good. And then we have what? If I do that shape I think it's gonna be three D though. Yeah, it's three D. So four by five. So four by five is gonna be uh it has the wrong well no I th I think it's s s four by f five. It should be maybe the other way around. I'm not too sure. Um but then I can just flatten it. Uh I can just let it know what's the dimension. Yeah I think that's it. Do I have to do that? Alright. Okay wait. Whew! Nope. We have a twenty. Oh my god. Uh uh flatten the um thing is it squeeze? What's what is s uh squeeze? Is it squeeze? N P dot squeeze, right? N P dot squeeze in there. Four by five, yes. Woohoo! Perfect. So that thing goes here and this thing goes there. Perfect. That whole mess that we've done here is gonna go straight in there. Self what's called? Hidden states no. Hidden hidden states. Self that hidden states equal boom. That whole whole thing. And this should work. Okay 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 okay. That's good. Now we do the output. And the output is what? I hope I don't have the same issue. Output is a one by one. So I'm gonna take this output and I'm gonna do the same trick here. I'm gonna shove it right there. Output's dot append outputs at T. Right? Anything breaks here? We're good. We're 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 going good here. So that's that. And then once I'm out, I'm gonna do self dot outputs equal and then I just need to uh like do the same kinda trick here. And then just print that. The N P array uh outputs. See it's just taking way too long. What's up? It's noon! My man. What the heck? Okay wait. One, two, three, four. This is good. And I'm just gonna need to squeeze it like that. If I squeeze it like this uh and then I get the shape. What is it? What? Oh yeah. I'm ending. Upper side I think this is this is fine. This is all fine. And if I don't squeeze it, what's up? What happen if I don't? Four one one. Nah. But this one is four one one. This is one four two one. So if I do squeeze it it's gonna be four four two, four one. Okay cool. So I'll take that and I'll put it straight into self dot outputs right there. And I'll take this whole thing. Okay, I think we went through it. Like that forward that forward should be good. Right? That forward should be uh good. We're going in and out of this. Then we have everything we need. There we go. That is beautiful. This all garbage we can uh remove it. This whole thing is good. This is not great really great. But it works. And we don't need to go in. Previous hidden state we had to do that. And this is what we're gonna use. This is my X P array. So this is my initialization. Step zero. initialization. And uh w this is like stepping and I just did that temporarily. As we temporary. And then um here uh we're doing a bunch of um conversion uh and sorting. Cool! Perfect! So forward we we made some uh some runway here. So we're not doing too bad. Uh wait a second. A second uh Uh any question whatsoever about the forward pass? I think we did it was not too bad, right? Messing around with um uh honestly messing around with the dimensions is half the half the problems here. Like uh as soon as you get it right, I think it's not too bad. So now let's actually ha actually do the backpropagation properly. And uh to do that we have to define our little loss function uh between the predicted output and the actual target. So we're here. Okay. Okay wait. So we're gonna use a square error loss. This is our prediction. This is the right stuff. So I have my X, I have my Ys I have my learning rate. And my output are stored there. Well I can step through them. I can calculate my loss. Okay, okay, okay. And then backpropagation through time is a process of tracking training RNN by unrolling them through time, applying backpropagation to compute gradient at each time step. The key step is in B P T R: compute the gradient of the loss with respect to the output. So that. Compute the gradient of the output layer weights and biases. So these two. And we just accumulate them. And backpropagate the gradient through the hidden layers. And then we take these and then we do tuck 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 tuck. This is element-wise multiplication. Uh this is H T. We store it here. And then we compute the gradient for the inline uh wait we didn't we just do that? But this is the output layer weights. We backpropagate that to ca to get our derivative here. And then we compute the gradient of the hidden layer weights and biases. Repeat step one to four for each time step. T in reverse order. That'll be one big for loop. In reverse. So I have to start from the M and then go back with the X and my Ys. Right. After computing the gradient we update the weights and biases using gradient descent. Basic stuff. This like will this is actually not the way you would do it, right? Like there there there's other ways. Um okay cool. Not too bad. Okay initialization we've done that. Forward pass. Uh I don't have to store the input. The input is given back. Implement the backward method to perform B P T. Compute the gradient at each time step in reverse order. Accumulate them and you play the weight. Train the RNN over multiple epochs by repeatedly performing for and backward. This is already given. Okay this looks a bit A I generated by the way. So this is a forward pass. It's fine. I should have read that. That would have been you helpful. Then we compute the loss. The loss we're gonna compute it where? Are we storing it somewhere? I think the loss we're gonna have to calculate it here. Right? Okay. So first off step zero: calculate the loss. Uh and I'm gonna use that. By the way folks, if you have any have any question or anything during this, don't don't hesitate to uh let me know. I I really wanna get this done. Um okay this is um the Yeah it is. There is this pretty fu it's pretty fun. Go ahead, try it out yourself. Hazy Shah. Um yeah. So this is my what I called outputs. Self dot outputs. Right? This is my Y. What's Y two? What? Wait a second. What the heck are they saying? No wait 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 wait. They just unrolled it. Okay right right right. They just unrolled it. But the the formula is this actually. We just need to sum them. Like that, right? Okay. That's that. Okay so yeah this is my self dot output. This one oops. This is my mean square loss here. And uh and this is my Y over there. Here. Right. So I can just do this minus this exponent and then one divided by T which is the number of um of uh elements. So here this is my input size. And do I have all of that? I think so uh. Okay so calculate the M S E loss in squared here. So I'm gonna call it L equal and then I'm gonna do one divided by uh I think I do I did I store that somewhere? No it just it's just a given. No I just have that. And I don't know what this is. How do they call it? They call it backward on the expected output. And how they get expected output is this it's a NumPy array. Okay so wait. Wait wait wait. And I want to have uh my um input size. Yeah. That's what I want to. And I want to do multiply this whole thing, right? Like that by um assignment. So N P dot sum of me doing self dot output, right? Which is like Y hat. Let's call it Y hat. Gonna take it here, put it there. So I have Y hat minus my Ys and then like these I'm gonna do uh power of two on them. Like that. That's what I want. If I can get that uh if I can get that that would be that would be pretty nice. So this I have, this I have, this it's good, this is good. The input size I need. So let's actually try to get my input size uh uh input uh it's not the input size, it's the input length. So this I have, this I have, this it's good, this is good. The input size I need. So let's actually try to get my input size uh uh put uh it's not the input size, it's the input length. That's what it is, right? That's a t. Where t is the length of the sequence, yeah. So it's input length. I think one thing that is throwing me off a bit right right now is that there's length of an input and then there's a size of it. So we're running through like uh uh like dimension issue again and again and again and again a multiple time. So we are gonna have to do input uh size, input length equal x dot shape here. I'm gonna just print x dot shape just to be sure. Oh shit, no. Uh x dot shape. Four two. So four is the input length. Two is the input size. And what I need is to get that up, get that up and use the input length. Now this is my uh initialization actually. 'Kay. Did we? Okay, this is good. This is good, 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 good. What's my loss looking like? Okay, nice. And like it's just it's one number, right? Because I'm summing it up. Yeah, it's just one number. Yes. Perfect. So I think the calculate loss part, we got it covered. I think we're good here. I think now we need to do um run to step two. So step two is what at this point is we've done that and now we have to compute the gradient of the loss with respect to the output. So step two. Uh wait, no this this will be a for like a for loop. So let's assume we're doing it for one step at this point. Let's just assume that we're doing it for one step, which will be like uh index equals zero, right? We're we're just gonna run it for one step. So then so gradient of L, I'll call it G of L, L_ G equal y hat at index minus y at index. I'm gonna step through this super carefully. But is what? Why is it like this? I think it's just one array, right? Um dot shape. It's a one by one. Oh, which is fine, I guess. I think it's fine, right? It's a one by one. Uh wait, I'll just do that, like start. And then this is the stop. Start stop. Okay, cool. Nice, nice, nice. This is this is good. Then we have what we have um compute the gradient uh for the output layer weights and biases. So okay, it does it does this. It just i uh added h here. The y like this we don't have to accumulate, we just do it once. Uh this is for each t. Right, this is for each t, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So uh backward pass, okay. So we do add t is two? Well, good idea. Let's let's start at the end. Um so let's start at uh three, right? 'Kay, good, 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 yeah, good, good. Perfect. We have print L_ G. We're gonna step through this stuff carefully. Right, good. So we have that. We compute this. And then we back propagate to find D_ H_ two, D_ W_ Y_ H_ one and then D_ B_ Y_ Y_. And then use chain rules, it could be gradient with respect to the input and wait, wait, what? Yeah, that's bad. Yeah, right, right. Okay. Okay, so then what I need is D wait, um W H_ Y G, the gradient of that is equal to that gradient, L_ G, time How are we doing it? One by one or what? For the output layer weights and biases, back propagate the gradient through the hidden layers. And then yeah, we repeat step one. Okay, we have to do it like no, for each time step t in reverse order from t to one. Now this is why we have to uh to accumulate the gradient here. Um this we don't have to do it because it's once, but th here we have to do it. Okay. So then I will do I will actually take all of these and initialize them here. Gonna need one for this, which is gonna be zero. I'm gonna need uh one for uh B_ Y G which gonna be zero. I'm gonna need one for H_ T? No. Yeah. Right, so now this one is wait, wait. This is the previous and then we're doing this is for the wait. Okay. So that we don't need and then I need to have my uh stuff that we're accumulating here on these. But these will need to be a matrix. Um I'll have to have the same form as the other one. Yeah. Because I'm gonna add to them. It's gonna be D_ H_ raw times um oh jeez, that will be a mess. 'Kay, let's just do it for one shot and let's not worry about any accumulation. I will have to do it here. Okay, cool. Step three, index three, good. We have that. And then this is where we're at. We're at this uh at uh self hidden states at index. And we're just gonna print that. The gradient of that. Okay, this is not working because what? I think this one we need to flatten it a bit. Do I have to squeeze it? Oh. And here, right? Me indexing there. 'Kay, what's up? What? Is that one? That's the issue? One one, four five. It's a four five. Oh, well. That's not good. This should be not too bad, right? Can able to, yeah, we do. So we have uh if we index, we have one, two, three, four, five, good. So we're taking that one out. And now what we're trying to do, this is a one one. And we're trying to do what? We're doing all of them. All the output. All the output for that. Because what we have here, that this this is this is gonna be a one by one, obviously, because we just take one y hat and the y. And then we have a four by five. But we're just taking one, so we have a one by five. So we have one by five and a one by one. Well this why should it not work? One by one, four by five. Oh, I need to take the transpose. Ah yeah. That, the Is that it? Uh wait, no, 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 no. I'll um sh I'll need to take uh take that and then um well if I do transpose it what do I have? I'm gonna take the shape. 'Kay, we're gonna have to stop this run soon because I'm absolutely starving. Uh wait, we have a five by one. We have a five by one here. And we have a one by one here. Well of course, it won't work. But if I do that we're gonna have what? A five by one still. What the heck? Alright uh three by whoa. 'Kay, good guys. I think we're gonna have to stop here. Um that's it for today. We're gonna catch up on this. And I'm gonna try to 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 finish it up. What we have left is not that bad, right? What we have left at the moment is we need to um uh like the forward, I'm pretty sure it's good unless like I messed up some of the um uh the output input uh directionality of it. I don't think so. But we'll have to double check that. The forward is pretty fu is pretty fine. It work with all shape and size of input size and like uh length of sequence. And uh the only thing that is left here is that we go to the backward, we calculate the gradient and then like by going backward through time and then we just add it to the accumulated on um on each of the uh uh of each gradient. And then we we use like here it's just like um gradient descent uh straight up with the learning rate. But I think it we have too much to do. Uh but we have to do that on a on a different time. Um if that was useful, any question before we uh we we stop this live? It was not too bad. I think one thing that I had the most problem with is uh all dimension that I do mess around with. Uh but I think we're gonna get there. Alright, fantastic folks. Have a great rest of the day. And uh let's get this done.